Welcome, everybody. Today is Tuesday, May 18th. It is 7:30 PM. Tonight, we have a planning zoning public hearing and general meeting. Jeremy Ginsberg, the playing director, myself are here in town hall room 113.
213.
213. One of these days. And we're also conducted this may be to go to a meeting on a virtual basis in accordance with the governor's, with the governor's regulations. I think Jeremy has some housekeeping stuff to do before we get started, so I'll turn it over to Jeremy, please.
Yes, if everyone can hear me, I think what we're going to do because the general meeting agenda is very short. And I think one member. Choose themselves what we would take a motion to do the general meeting items first. Take the agenda out of order and have the public hearing in a few minutes, but we would need a motion and a vote to take the agenda a little bit out of order. And I don't expect the general meeting portion to take more than 15 minutes.
We're going to give the chairman report after.
That's correct.
So it's going to be a general meeting, public hearing, general meeting.
Correct.
Got it. Can someone make that motion for us, please?
I'm ready. Motion.
And I guess second from Jen Leahy, fantastic favor. Fantastic, okay. So the first item on the agenda tonight is going to be deliberations only, we're doing this, right?
Yeah.
The ratios for a special application number 258 B the boy La Taqueria Inc. Darian Place LLC 1077 Boston Post Road. I thought we delivered on this once already.
Fred.
Mister. Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think I'm the reason for the refusal and so I'll, I'll see you later.
Okay.
1077 Post George refused. I was not at the last week's meeting.
Yeah.
Did.
We already debated this.
Anything else on 1077, it was Fred uneventful?
Yeah, you're right, the commission did deliberate briefly on, on the application there were. I don't believe there are any major issues. We expect to put this on for a vote next week, but just included it on the agenda for any additional comment by commission members.
Okay, so everybody already additionally come up to this one and you can raise your hand or say ayes Jennifer? No, no.
No comments, great.
Okay, great, I think this is being written up as an approval. I know it's been written over as approval. Okay, the next element of the agenda is deliberation possible decision for the following. Coastal site plan review number 106B is a boy flood flood damage prevention application. George, okay. Front down intervention application number 69B land filling and regreating option. Application number 499 Michael and Nancy hurling trustees. 89 five mile river road. This is the house that you remember that came in a while ago. They were going to lift up the house and raise it now they're actually going to raise the house. And you can check this belly on that for my lawyers. We have a draft resolutions in our pockets, in our packets. I've got a couple of questions and quick items to go over, but I want to let anybody else if they have any questions, comments, scriptures, errors. George, we usually have you go first.
Thank you, I, I think you said that their first application, they would have raised the, the foundation and now they're going to raise the foundation, so. The first application was not including a raising of the foundation, I don't think, right?
It was, it was a little bit of pun of words, it's a one that we're going to raise as in lift it.
Ah, sorry.
And now we're going to raise the process and demolish it.
All right, all right, okay, I know I don't have any comments, concerns, nope.
Okay, Kara, you good?
Yeah, I'm good, I think I had one little typo. And I showed it over earlier.
Okay, Jen Leahy, you okay?
I'm okay.
Great, Jim Rand, any questions, comments?
No, I'm okay, thanks.
Okay, the only thing I want to do is on page two, number two. I'm going to read it out and make sure we're on the same page. The existing septic tank is going to will be pumped and crushed. Okay, so remember that. Then if you go down to the bottom of number eight. If you read the second cast existing, the in the treated in the existing four by foot precast galleries that were used for the septic system. On the property will not be repurposed and served as a bio retention area. I just want to make sure that everybody knows that that's two different things we're talking about. A tank is part of a system. And the galleries are being saved. So if we could add a word or something.
Sure, what we can do is clarify in number eight and talk about the leaching fields.
Then it's going to come up again. You blew that Fred?
Yeah.
Let's see your cards to Fred if you can. Great, okay, then the last one is letter D is in David. It says, no processing or crushing mixing fabric or the background. Bring someone or something shall be engaged. We're crushing. Do you know who that is, Fred?
That's so loud.
I can't see anybody else. Cause it says or other similar should be engaged or operation on the site such as.
Other than crushing the septic tank.
Perfect.
And I think there's a typo in number 12 and we'll take care of that.
Okay, and the other question I had is on number two on the S build survey, did we make this, this stronger? The S was to include measurements from known permanent invisible service structure buried infrastructure located on site.
That's the recommendation of Public Works. They can figure out where things are in the future if necessary.
That's cool, all right, that's it. With that said, I would entitation a motion to approve as amended. Okay, Carrie Gately seconded by Jim Rand of the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, thanks Jen.
Five zero.
Five zero, we're all set. That includes this portion of the general meeting. So if we're going to stop the general meeting and go back into the public hearing. Kara Gately, are you going to stick around or are you going to?
Um, I guess that's really up to whatever Jeremy and Fred and you, Chairman, of anything is best. I am going to recuse myself even though I'm not involved with the application, the proposed development or any of it, but I to work at a place that is located in the building, so I think it's appropriate to recuse myself and I will do so or have done so. But if you guys want me, I'm happy, you know. I don't know, I'll stick around, I'll do whatever you want.
No, recommendation Kara would be, we have a quorum, you can safely log off. And then I can fill in later on the chairman's report if there's anything of interest in the chairman's report which will come afterwards.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Enjoy your evening.
Bye.
Great.
Okay, so we still have a quorum.
Okay, so now Chairman Gately, Commissioner Gately is going to log off. We have four commissioners left, which is Jim Rand, George Riley, Jennifer Leahy and myself. We sound a quorum. The next side we're going, now we're going to go to the public hearing. For the next on the agenda is proposed amendments to the Darian zoning regulate regulations COZR number one dash 2020 put forth by Parklands Darian LLC. Do I want me to read this again for emphasis?
I don't think so, I can give a brief summary.
Okay, fantastic, this is just, this application was opened about two weeks ago on.
April 27.
April 27th, at that time, we had a presentation from the applicant. Their lawyer, their engineer, and I think maybe somebody else from their team. And they gave us a big binder. And at that meeting, we did not. We want to dedicate this meeting to public comments, we didn't take any comment at that meeting. So now we're going to take it tonight, but Jeremy is going to lead us off in, in advance of this meeting, vast of last meeting. We got 37 pages worth of testimony. Which is some piece of testimony where two pages, so it's not necessarily 37 people. A letter from a lawyer, which is two pages. And today we got at least another couple of emails on it.
Yes.
So I've read every single thing that's been submitted. But any of those people that already submitted something more than welcome to speak. But Jeremy is going to take it from here.
Sure, as you may recall from the last public hearing on April 27th, the proposal is to establish a new designed office multifamily residential overlay zone. That would be applied to the designed office zone throughout town. You may recall at the last hearing, we read into the record, the West Card comments. And we noted at the time, there were a number of comments from members of the public, those are all in the record posted to the town website. As Mr. Ovani noted, we received a number of emails, letters today, which have all been forwarded to the commission members, including from Sandra Conway, Kristen Nicola Meehan and Brad Halsey. And again, those have all been posted to the town website. So tonight is an opportunity for the general public to respond to the application to comment. We're not sure yet if the hearing will close tonight, but at this point, we're starting with the public comments again with the acknowledgement that we have forwarded every email and letter that was submitted to the office and submitted for the record, the commission members have all of those. And those are considered part of the record at this time.
Hey. Mister Chairman, could I just inquire?
Of course you can.
Before we get started, how deep into the proposed condominiums or apartments or whatever it is at Parkland, should we be going in considering these regulations? Because it seems to me a lot of what I have seen is very specific to that proposal and I don't know that that's what we should be focusing on.
Right, I would 100% agree, this is a townwide proposal to create a new code. It's not specific to any one property. It is a town where it's supposed to cover all of the DO zones, right? Not specific to what, so you're correct, I do not want to get into super specifics on the applicant that put forward, which is the Parklands LLC. Because it's covers, we designated it last time is at least five spots in Darian that are zoned.
Designed office, including going to circle and some other office parks. I don't know if Mr. Hennessy has anything he wants to add on that one point before we get started.
Okay, because I want to ask if Mr. Green is here. I let him go first as usual.
Well, why don't we go Mr. Hennessy first and then we'll go if Mr. Green's here.
Okay, the applicant is welcome to speak first, I see Mr. William Hennessy, Esquire.
Yes, sir. Sir. Thank you, Mister Chairman, I'm going to be very, very brief because as you noted, we had the entire evening back on the 27th and we feel as though we completed our initial presentation comprehensively. But in the aftermath of the hearing, we studied what was in the record in terms of just public comment and we thought there were two broad themes that we hadn't done such a comprehensive job on and one was traffic. And the other was the impact of a development of multifamily development on adjacent, single family housing. Those hadn't been addressed, yet they were thematically sort of pervasive throughout the, the public comment, so we didn't want to leave you without some comment on them. And to Mr. Riley's point here, um, it, what we have supplied in terms of, of some expert insight, it isn't intended to be or relate to an actual development, but in a broad sense, the overall impact that traffic and multifamily might have on property value. It, 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 it isn't intended to be, for instance, a comprehensive traffic report that gives you levels of service at a, an intersection. What it is intended to do is state what many of us know intuitively, which is a residential development by nature is going to produce less traffic at peak hours during the weekdays than a, an office building, that, that's really the, the purpose of it. So you understand that and so it's clear in the record. And the other, the report prepared by Dr. Poland and his colleague, Mr. Korea from Goldman in York is, I thought, an interesting comprehensive look at impacts of property values of houses that are adjacent to multifamily developments in Darian. And I think you'll see that there is no adverse impact. That was our sole purpose, we supplied that to you, I hope you, we were happy to answer questions after tonight or later tonight. And we did.
One, one thing we talked about at the last meeting was the proper standard of review for zoning regulation amendments is consistency with the town plan of conservation and development. And that you had submitted materials as part of the original application in support of that argument, correct?
Absolutely, 100%, and these were meant to buttress that and supplement that.
Okay, thank you.
That is something. Um, so with, with that, the only thing I'll close, Mister Chairman is telling you, the materials that we supplied to you under letter to Mr. Ginsberg on the 11th of May were also supplied to Mr. Green that same day.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, he's not CC it on your letter, but that's fine. Yeah.
He did leave me an email telling me he probably would not be here tonight.
Okay.
Excuse me, it was a voicemail.
Okay, I don't want to get too deep into that additional submittal, I mean, yes, we have it, it's very specific. The only caveat I had relative to an office building versus a apartment building, you, you gotta talk about size, you know? I could have a, I could have a 10,000 square foot office building and a 300,000 square foot apartment building, it's a different traffic, so. Just be careful when you're talking generalities, I mean, I work with Tom Rich and, and you work with Tom Rich. Sometimes he builds an office building, sometimes he builds an apartment building.
That's completely understood. Yeah. I guess our report is based on all things being equal.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Okay, so you're okay for now, sir?
Yes, sir, we're ready to turn it over to your hands in the public.
Okay, fantastic. So we're going to open up this meeting to the general public for comment. I would personally like to invite Mister.
Joel Green.
Joel Green, he wrote us a letter dated April 27th with a cover email asking us to extend the hearing. So we could meet with his clients and also meet with Mr. Hennessy if possible. So if Mister Joel Green is here, I'd like to open up to him first, if you guys don't mind.
So, hi, this is Monohar Pasmati. Mister Joel Green won't be here today because we thought all of us who he was representing would be on the call and could represent ourselves, you know? What are real cases, why we oppose this?
Okay, we don't really have any kind of order, so if anyone wants to speak first, you're more than welcome, just you'd say your name, address and, and relation to. And ratio to the project, sure, you're more than welcome to go first, sir.
Okay, since I. Uh, yeah, this is Monohar Pasmati, 1134 Fairmead Road. So my house basically will really look over overlooks the building and it'll overlook the new complex. So, so, you know, I did send a letter to you, send you an email some time ago. But some of the new things that I would like to add because everything I've, I've already added, I don't want to repeat all that. But one of the things I felt like this request was asking for too many changes, you know? You ask for one thing at a time, you're asking for a zoning change, you're asking for number of parking spots to be changed per apartment. You know, then, you know, it's the density of the number of apartment built in apartments that he has there. And also he's requesting, uh, you know, because it's a commercial building, he wants the height to remain for a commercial building, although it's going to be a residential building. So it just seems like he wants the cake, I want to eat the cake and I have the cake and eat it too. And now just because you want a zoning change, then have a residential height restriction, you can't have, because you had it at commercial, you can't go have a, you know, you know, residential building of three and a half stories or whatever the exact figures, I don't know, but you know, that's my point.
Okay.
Nothing else to add, everything else is in my email, which I guess you.
Yes, we have your letter dated Tuesday, April 27th at 2:08 PM, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thanks.
I would like to speak next.
I will. My name is Evan Flynn and I live at one Fairmead Road. Can you hear me?
Yeah, welcome.
Thanks. I have mine written out. So my name is Evan Flynn, I moved on to Fairmead Road in July 2010. It's been a dream come true, my property even had a picket fence. Our little street offers a truly magical place for our kids to grow up on. It is a tight knit and welcoming neighborhood, it is diverse, which is extremely important in Darian and supportive and truly is special. Unfortunately, my memories are divided into pre-assisted living facility and post-assisted facility. I know Fairmead is near the highway. But there is a huge difference in the noise pollution that has occurred after the assisted living facility was built. I feel like no one seems to care and worse that there's no accountability. The entire development process was the antithesis of a responsible and well thought out community development project. It benefited one Parkland's owner, Bob Gillian and his buyer, but it most certainly did not do anything for the surrounding neighborhoods of tax paying families. We live with, we lived with a terrible construction noise and constant flow of trash overwhelming our lawns. And now we continue to live with a seriously loud I-95 noise. Sound waves are like water, unpredictable, the sound from the traffic may seem to bounce, seem to bounce off the massive building instead of being absorbed by it. In addition, many trees were cut down to install a sidewalk and adding to the lack of sound absorption. I, like many of my neighbors, feel really disappointed in Bob Gillian in the way he has previously acted and have no faith that he will deliver any more of the empty promises in this project than he has done in the past. We were shown plans for one building, but I can assure you that is not the building that currently stands overwhelming looming down upon our, this, this family oriented street. Now it seems that our property values and our quality of life are in his hands. I am all for repurposing outdated commercial buildings, but I feel strongly a three apartment should not be included in that process. At the very least, it should have to adhere to affordability housing rules of being a mile away from a train station. Another big question to consider is why does this project have to be so dense? I know Mr. Hennessy has talked about multifamily producing less traffic just now, but the question is also not only Mr. O'Vanny suggested that size has to be taken into account accountability, but also vacancy rates, those buildings have been emptied. So please, please recognize this, please look at the overall picture and please recognize that our little road has already been so slammed and we don't want to be put in the same position. Thank you, appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. Would someone like to speak next? You need to just turn your camera on, raise your hand.
Hi, if you don't mind, I'd like to speak next.
Please go ahead, say your name, address from the record, please.
Of course, my name is Michael Sharland. I live at 28 Fairmead Road. I'm also an adjacent neighbor, I'm looking out my window now at the existing building. Appreciate the, the board's attention and time tonight and consideration on the matter. I, I wanted to speak in, and on the topic of one of the comments made earlier about how the current proposal is on a zoning overlay. And, and sort of one of the difficulties I had in, in deciding how to respond to the proposal, since it seems that they're asking for a zoning overlay at the same time they're asking to move forward with a redevelopment plan. I think that the specific proposal by Parklands is indicative of what kind of projects are going to be proposed in the wake of an overlay change. I think it's pretty clear already that even if you, if you grant this overlay, there's still going to be people seeking to, to make changes and exceptions that are going to allow denser and, and bigger projects than the zoning overlay might suggest. Parklands is the, the kind of the model topic here, but there's a big swath of the town that we're talking about changing considerably. And I know that me and my neighbors have spent time thinking about it, it's difficult to get a group of people who, who agree on almost nothing together to talk and, and sort of come up with a cohesive argument or a cohesive stance, I can tell you that many of us disagree with the project, but we might disagree for entirely different purposes. I'm, I'm really surprised that we'd consider a sweeping change to a much larger part of the community when it hasn't been well publicized in those areas and we've had no response from anyone who's adjacent to any of the other areas. And, and I think when I, I listened to, you know, Parkland's representatives, I get it, they're paid to make a case why this project makes sense for the town. They're, they're not unbiased, they're not here to help me to make our neighborhood better. They're, they're not here to further the town's interests in, in providing affordability. The, the project is geared entirely on maximizing profit, how dense can we get housing? We're not going to have enough parking spots if we get the abatement for the height of the building. So we're going to need the height of the building allowance and we're going to need, and so we'll call it overparked and we'll say that residential buildings and it's like some of the, some of the, the studies have produced are in general and talk in, in the general sense when the specific sense doesn't suit them. And then others are, are why we need to, to allow all of these other exceptions. And I, I just think, I, I wouldn't consider myself a long time resident of Darian, my family and I moved here just under five years ago. And I, you know, already with the development of the rest of the property where they put this giant ALF in. I think it, you know, it's tremendous that we're providing homes and, and places to live for people who need it. But our neighborhood, our small neighborhood already doesn't feel like a suburban, single family neighborhood. I have a, you know, from one end of my window to the next, a gigantic development already overlooking our entire street. And, and now under the current zoning rules, which didn't need to be changed and, and it's allowed. But, but now we're saying we need to overlay them to allow denser, bigger projects. And even the overlay wouldn't be enough, we'd need to make changes to allow less parking and we need to make changes. And, and I just, I'm shocked that, that, you know, I think the town's aspirations and plans are, are noble and I think that there's definitely a way to do it. But, but I'm just shocked that a one acre single family zoned neighborhood is now being seriously considered to be directly adjacent to, to very dense housing. And, and it's, it's not even going to qualify for the, for the half mile zone, I think the other areas might, and there might be projects that might suit there that fall under this zoning ordinance, but I'm shocked that there hasn't been a wider discussion on, on the much bigger impacts that this proposal might have on our community. And, and we've talked amongst our, our group and we've said, we, you know, some of us agree that actually there are probably really good candidates for projects like this in the town, there's, there's areas that might benefit from redevelopment. But I'm just really disappointed to see that even be, you know, while we're still talking about adjusting the overlay, we're already have a a logjam of extra allowances and, and exceptions to the rules so that we, people can, can maximize the return of investment in, in a neighborhood that they are not part of, that they don't, they don't live in, that they're, you know, they're just here to maximize profit. And so I would love to see a robust, larger discussion amongst the town or at least the neighborhoods that are going to be impacted by the overlay. And I'd like to see a separation of the proposal for the overlay from all these other follow on, oh, I, you know, we need to change parking allowances and we're not really going to do a parking study, we'll talk about in general that residential buildings might, might have a lower impact, pound for pound. It's just like, like one of the earlier speakers said, so many changes baked into one, we're being told it's a town initiative and the zoning overlay. I agree with you, I think it, it's something that the town really needs to look at. But also the whole town and all the neighborhoods that are involved need to participate and you need to hear what they think. And, and then we need to separate it from this one single project, which, which is really, really frustrating to us. We already had a huge development, you know, less than 100 yards from where I'm sitting right now. And already we're talking about changing the rules to allow more and changing rules after that to allow even denser development. And it, it's just, it's a really, really difficult thing for me to feel good about the community we moved to. We moved to a one acre, single family neighborhood, our kids play on the streets, it's very suburban. And, and now since I've moved in, that's it, one street over, we've like redeveloped and we're talking about redeveloping again and. We've like redeveloped and we're talking about redeveloping again and we're going to change the rules again. And I think when I look at a map of the town, this zoning district makes a lot of sense in some areas. But this specific project, I think, is not going to serve the needs of the community in the way it's been characterized. It's significantly different than the development that has already been approved and done in the community. So direct comparisons are kind of silly. And it's disappointing that we haven't had that wider community involvement from the other neighborhoods where the overlay will apply. So I appreciate your time tonight. I appreciate that you guys have a lot to consider and there's different views on it. But I, you know, I'm not being paid. I'm not a professional representative. My neighbors aren't being paid. We're not a professional representatives. If this were good for us, we'd be supportive of it, obviously. We live in this community. We have more at stake here than anyone else. And so hopefully you understand how to weigh those opposing views.
Great. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. I'm not getting paid either, but that's fine.
Oh, the other kid, I meant the representatives on the other side, certainly the board. You guys get paid even less than us because you're, you know, expected to be here regularly.
Oh, it's funny. You voted for me. Catherine Pirkowski, is she here in the room?
I am here.
Welcome. You're up next, according to Jeremy. Just say your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Catherine Pirkowski. I live at 152 Old Kings Highway North.
Thank you.
Do you need me to spell that?
No, I got it. We're fine.
Okay. Thank you very much. I actually wasn't planning on speaking tonight until I heard the previous speaker, so I'm going to do my best to be concise. When we're talking about overlay zones, you know, we are here directly impacted since I have affordable housing being built in my backyard. I just want to make the point that when we bought, we bought in a residential area. And we weren't buying, we weren't buying to be next to an apartment building, right? So those things have impacts. They have quality of life impacts. It's not just about noise. I don't complain about the noise on 95 because I know where I bought, right? But you're talking about a different kind of usage when you start talking about heavier density, residential density, than what previously existed. So yes, maybe traffic is lighter. I don't know that that's necessarily the case, but I, you know, that could be. But the impact is different because what you're talking about is seven days a week, 24 hours a day. And you have people outside. You have people socializing. I read one of the neighbors say something about, oh, there's all sorts of, you know, activities now outside with the assisted living facility. Those things impact you. And I think that should the commissioner decide that they want to go forward with something like this, there should be some controls, quite frankly, to protect neighbors. Because right now, there's not a whole lot. So if we're looking at overlay zones, could there be something that we look at, for example, higher fences? More landscaping? What are the controls over landscaping? Do people have to put down bonds? You know, because what ends up happening is you're next to, you're in a residential neighborhood and you're not dealing with a neighbor. You're dealing with a corporation or something bigger than that that you then have to get changes from or work with. So I think from the get-go, thinking about the quality of life for people who are next to overlay zones, it's not what I bought for, but that's what I got. So are there ways to mitigate that? And then the other thing that I wanted to mention is I hope, as we're talking about these overlay zones, and I haven't watched the last OPC meeting, but I hope that these are conversations that are being had with the Selac woman and also this kind of density is going to up our school numbers for children. So there's just no doubt that it's going to impact enrollment. And I think that's just something, I'm not saying that's good or bad. It's just something that needs to be, you know, sort of well-communicated, let's say, between the committees in town. Because that will impact our school system. We have to be ready to absorb that and meet kids where they are. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, and yes, at the last OPC meeting, school enrollment and population did come up as part of zoning changes. It's definitely something we keep our eye on with the other boards. The next person we have up is Sarah Conway. Is that right?
Sandra Conway. Yes, thanks, Chairman.
Address, please.
I'm at 21 Fairmead Road.
Got it. Yep. You sent a letter.
An email. It has pictures. So, but if you would humor me, just so I can review it with you, I'll go through it quickly, just so I can hit some of the key points.
You want to show your screen? Do you know how to do that?
I am sharing. It's not showing.
Oh, it's not showing up. Fred, share your screen with us.
It says stop sharing webcam. Sorry. Feel like I'm sharing, but...
Fred, are you there? Try again, Sandra.
Just shared it with you, Sandra.
Thanks, Fred.
Okay. Um, so basically I had several themes when I was writing this document, and by the way...
We still can't see your screen.
I'm not showing it. I'm just showing myself. So I'm just going to go through the document.
Got it.
But basically, the document went from 10 pages to four pages, so I hope you're happy with that. The first theme for the night is, will history repeat itself? And that's basically when Mr. William Hennessy showed us his presentation, which I thought was brilliant and well-prepared. I noticed some themes. It was the same type of presentation that we heard for residents at Selac Woods. And even the pictures have the same feel. So Attorney William Hennessy, Craig Flaherty, really did a nearly idyllic vision of a 59-unit multifamily apartment project bordering single-family homes. And basically, it's an office building who's suffering temporary setback from the pandemic. And I hope this committee will take the time to thoroughly review this rezoning overlay request. Really look through the biased studies, the artful drawing sketches, the colorful language, and you'll see a struggling office building owner looking to take advantage of our community's need for affordable and diverse housing and once again cash out on a property sold to the highest developer. It takes me to that age-old proverb, which has existed since the 17th century. Fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. And that's why I'm here. I should be at the DHS baseball pizza party, but this is really important to us. Over the past decade, I've lived in Darien for nine years now. The residents of Fairmead Road have endured an expansive, an expansion on the I-95 rest stop, an expansion on the I-95 overpass, and of course, the transformation of 1 Parkland Drive into a 132,000-square-foot residential building. Without a zone change, the developer was able to defy height and scale limitations and build a 100-plus-room assisted living facility now known as residents at Selac Woods. At the time, residents were shown similar sketches and verbiage as seen as the proposed apartment project that we saw on May 4. The presentation didn't accurately depict the impact of the surrounding area. As a result, property values plummeted and the character and the street and the quality of life has been damaged forever. The residents of Fairmead Road were not protected by the committee this last go-around, which goes back to another theme. There's a well-known acronym and it's called NIMBY, not in my backyard. But here's something unique. This time, it includes the town of Darien's backyard, which is unique. Attorney Hennessy has recently provided the support documents, and I'm glad that he brought that up. Joel Green did forward all the documents to us and I reviewed it. And that's what is in that document that I provided you. And I just noticed a couple inaccuracies that I really wanted to call out. Number one is the letter from Bob Gillian. And that was a letter to Jeremy Ginsburg. And basically, a couple parking spots and a new entrance to the town's nature preserve will not come close to paying for the damage a 59-unit apartment building with no amenities will do to seven distinct ecosystems, local wildlife, critical wetlands, and a bird sanctuary known as Selax in Dunlap Woods. The 120-plus people, all expected with cars due to this isolated location, living in these apartments, will use the town's nature preserve as their backyard. Mr. Hennessy discussed a traffic study that it was submitted. The traffic study recently submitted by the applicants is from a 2016 study that is obsolete. It was conducted at a time when the overpass was limiting traffic due to construction. There was no additional building on East Lane. And of course, the residence of Selac Woods was not built. We need an unbiased, improper third party to determine the traffic. Those living in the area can already attest the current traffic congestion today is not good. The last document that Mr. Hennessy provided was the assessment of impact, a submitted document based on academic and industry research. This paper claims that this project will somehow benefit Fairmead Road by providing a buffer from the I-95 and will not affect property values. We already know, real-life experience, that property values declined in the sound from removing the natural barrier, which are trees, created an adverse effect on protecting our homes, creating noise. Here's the fact. Providing an applicant of 3 Parklands Road with a residential overlay will give this developer the opportunity to once again overbuild. It's not simple. He's done it before. He will do it again. Even the Avalon Apartments and the affordable housing across from a blonde baseball field are scaled lower than what this proposal is. This particular overlay matters most. This is Darien's version of a housing project. The Selac family entrusted the surrounding land to the town. Please don't let political pressures to build affordable housing blind your decision-making. The political pendulum will eventually move again to a more moderate view. It always does. Allowing the seller to overbuild because of a temporary economic setback is a short-term solution with long-lasting effects on the town. We also ask, please, don't rely solely on the aerial photography provided by the applicant to make this big decision. The applicant wants you to do a flyby. And when you look at that aerial view, you see, oh, man, there's I-95. There's this giant service station. And it looks like a perfect, ideal location to stash an affordable housing project that no one in the town wants. The truth is, everyone will see this for years to come. Not from Fairmead Road per se, but from a town landmark designed and donated to future generations. What can P&amp;Z members do? Please, drive down Fairmead Road. This is a family-oriented road with nearly 20 children of all ages. Please, take a walk into Selax Woods. Review in person its untouched beauty and how the current building is situated. And please, take a look at Old Kings Highway North traffic. If you look at all of the aerial views that were submitted, Old Kings Highway isn't even listed on there. Take a look at all the streets that converge on Old Kings Highway North. East Lane with a new housing project. Fairmead Road. Parklands with its project. And I-95. They all converge into one small area. So what I ask is to please, look for yourself before you make a decision. The last page, I'm going to let you read on your own. I wanted David Letterman to do it for me, the top 10 reasons, so we could add some levity. But unfortunately, he was too busy. So basically, I just listed the top 10 reasons to reject 3 Parklands residential zoning overlay. And I'll just go through the top 10. I won't go into the detail. Density, traffic, inaccessibility, environment, office versus residential construction, sound pollution, schools, urban design versus suburban setting. This is an urban design. And Darien is a suburb. Residential impact. And last but not least, the residents say no. Darien residents are voicing a resounding no to the rezoning. A current petition, just in its beginning phase, has already received 300 signatures. Thank you for your time.
I appreciate all your well-thought-out stuff, comments in your 10-page letter that went down to four. Cool. Mr. Henry, I heard you were next.
Yeah, everyone. Thank you. Thank you for hearing us tonight. I'll try to be as succinct as possible. So I moved here in 2018 with my wife.
We need your address, sir, just for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Tim Henry. I live at 4 Fairmead Road.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. So I moved here in 2018 with my wife. We moved here after 10 years in New York City. We have been consumers of multifamily our entire adult lives. It provided culture. It provided convenience and ease of use at that time in our lives. At no point in our 20s did we ever see any appeal to Darien. As we began our family and looked to move to a new stage, we looked to the suburbs for a new experience. Neither of us had any familiarity with the town. We chose Darien because it is an easy commute to New York City. It has great schools. And it seemed to be a great place to raise a family. The biggest knock against Darien is its reputation for being unapologetically homogeneous. So from that perspective, we are hopeful and we are very supportive of the broader initiative to diversify housing. It is strange to us, however, that anyone is surprised that young people, meaning people in their 20s, are choosing not to live in Darien. The area caters to families. It is a little bit slower. The restaurants and bars close early. It's a suburb. So it's fairly straightforward to see that a lack of youthful culture is the driver behind the loss of these young people. It is not a lack of housing. Young people are choosing Stanford and they are choosing Norwalk over Darien because the offering is more appealing for that age group. My younger brother just moved to Stanford. That's, you know, a prime example. He would never think of moving to Darien. I can't consider myself a senior citizen yet, but I can't imagine many seniors are clamoring for less convenience and less amenities in their older years. In any case, there is a wave of positive change happening in Connecticut and Darien. Signature Group is attempting to better their situation by riding that wave, and I don't blame them for that. However, I am a long-term investor in Darien and I care not just about this neighborhood, but about this town. My kids will grow up here. They will make friends here and they will spend a good portion of their lives and shaping their adulthood here. While I'm sure that the people at Signature Group and Mr. Hennessy are nice people, I do not care about Signature Group and I don't care about their profits, and neither should this committee. So context and history are important here. Signature Group, this is all public record, so if it's wrong, blame the public record. Signature Group acquired the Parklands Office Park, which included 1 and 3 Parklands in 2005 for a purchase... for a purchase price of twelve point five million. At the time, the Office Park was nearly fully occupied with Signature Group's own marketing site on, I found it on WordPress, um, circa two thousand thirteen, saying, in the last, and I quote, "In the last decade, the park has experienced a remarkable occupancy rate with only one vacancy of forty-three hundred square feet for a period of three months," end quote. Since acquisition and under Signature Group's management, the success of the park declined significantly. In two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen, Signature Group lobbied for a zoning overlay to facilitate the development of a senior care facility in place of the One Parklands Office Building. They were successful. They did not build it themselves, but instead sold the site immediately after the zoning change for a hefty twelve million dollars. Notwithstanding any tenant improvements, leasing commissions, and capex, Signature Group, Signature Group recouped nearly their entire basis in the Office Park, not by skillfully managing it to a level of success that it had enjoyed for many years, but instead with political maneuvering. So here we are. There is a brand-new hundred-and-five-unit senior living facility that by Signature's own hand has isolated the remaining Office Building and according to Signature, has left it without a complimentary use. And here we are, in a familiar position, with Signature Group seeking to create value by changing the rules yet again. Signature Group stated that Mr. Gillen has treated this as his pet project and that he plans to redevelop, own, and manage the new multifamily project himself. When I heard that, some alarm bells started going off. Number one, does Signature Group have any, have any development experience? Much less something of this magnitude or use. Honestly, I do not know the answer to that, but after looking at their portfolio of properties, it doesn't seem so. Number two, does Signature Group have any meaningful experience managing multifamily? Signature's, Signature Group's multifamily portfolio on their website consists of three properties in Groton, Connecticut, each of which is in, each of which is in various stages of disrepair. They're, they are nothing to be proud of, and none of them could be considered a pet project. Furthermore, none of the properties have more than five units. This takes us to the more likely scenario, which is Signature Group successfully lobbies for their zoning change, sells the property in whole or in part to the highest bidder. This is what has been done before, and this is, and there is no reason to think that it wouldn't happen again. Signature Group has already proven to be an ineffective office landlord. When the going gets tough, they put on their adaptive reuse hats, head to City Hall, and ask for help. Why should it be our responsibility to bail them out again for a project that does not make sense? Intent can be overlooked if the outcome is positive, but in this case, it is most certainly not. A development proposal should stand on its own, and approval should be based solely on its own merit. Furthermore, if a proposal intends to change the rules, its impact should be overwhelmingly positive. The presentation that was given a few weeks ago took a case study in bad community development, wrapped it in the idea of housing diversity, wrapped it yet again in the merit of other, more appropriate sites, and presented it as progress. After bemoaning the state of the office market and their isolated location, the presentation focused on how the development would not have a negative impact on the community. The only mentions of a positive impact were related to the Grand List, diversification of housing stock in Darianne, and how the proposed densest apartment complex in Darianne would be a complimentary use to this area, which is absolutely absurd. The fact is, this site is the worst location for multifamily in the entire Design Office District, if not Darianne. Is it walkable to community amenities? No. Is it close to transportation hubs? No. These are fundamental principles for a successful multifamily development. One simply cannot argue that the location is good. So to compensate for that, one would think that there'd be a substantial amenity package. The proposal offers zero amenities, other than the basement gym, Selix Woods, and residence in Darianne. In other words, beggars can't be choosers. With Signature Group submitting their proposal now, they could be the first to market, beating other projects that will be coming and that will be better offerings. Given the push for multifamily in Connecticut and Darianne, this proposed project is already on the fast track to obsolescence. Signature Group provided us with a study, which was intended to dispel the fear that property values around this project will go down, which frankly, was never my concern. However, in the report, they used the Heights as a comparable property. The Heights is a transit-oriented community within walking distance to shops and restaurants. It also consists of two-story structures that look like houses. It is a bona fide neighborhood. It is not a comp. What Signature Group presented is a monolithic structure built to the maximum allowable size under the current zoning, but used for residential purposes. In other words, the best of both worlds for Signature Group. If residential is something that this committee does decide to allow at this site, Signature Group's proposal needs to be thrown in the garbage and reworked from scratch. The key word here is appropriate, and what they presented a few weeks ago was incredibly offensive. Slapped, slapping a few peaked rooftops on what is effectively an office building is lipstick on a pig. There is nothing even remotely close to what was presented anywhere in Darianne. To think that they should get away with that because its location is somewhat hidden is horrible. The question was asked at the first meeting, how many people would be in the Office Building if it were fully occupied? The answer was a hundred people. That is the estimated population of the projected multifamily building, according to the Signature Group. To be clear, residential use and office use are not the same. An Office Building sees an influx of people who sit at their desks from eight AM to six PM, Monday through Friday. A residential building is twenty-four-seven. It is dynamic. Even if you assume for the sake of argument that intensity when in use is the same for both residential and office, a residential building is fully occupied on Saturday and Sunday. Those two days alone equate to a forty percent increase in intensity at an absolute minimum. None of this even contemplates the increase in density and intensity that the senior care facility brought with it. None of this contemplates the sixteen units that are being dumped at the end of East Lane instead of downtown where the residents, who are adults with disabilities, would be afforded the ability to participate in our town instead of being tucked away and forgotten about. Signature Group argued that this compliment, that this development will be a more complimentary use to the residential community that it sits in. The community is here, and the community that they claim to be complementing disagrees entirely. Here's an example. We have a downtown business district. It has shops, it has restaurants, small businesses, et cetera. If we use Signature's argument, a new shopping mall next to downtown would complement the existing retail and would have a major impact on the Grand List. Should we build it? No. Because an increase in density, despite being similar use, is not necessarily complimentary. In the case of Three Parklands, there is no complimentary use whatsoever. This is unnecessary density for the sake of profit and at the expense of the neighborhoods around it. Signature Group has offered a pergola and a few parking spaces as compensation to this community for a completely inappropriate level of density. A complimentary use is something that benefits the seniors that are marooned on Parklands Drive or the adults with disabilities who are marooned on East Lane. Adult education, healthcare, a nature center, any number of industries or businesses that cater to our aging population and/or the disabled would be a complimentary use. It improves the area and the quality of life for the people living in it. The one qualifier there is you need a sponsorship group that is engaged, willing to do the work, and put in the money. Signature Group has demonstrated that they are not up to the task. Mr. Mulvaney, in your, uh, twenty-twenty State of the Town, you noted that Darianne has, has fared much better than the surrounding towns in terms of office occupancy. And I quote, "Darianne is a one-point-two-million-square-foot, Class A to C, commercial office market, according to the CoStar Group. Our office vacancy is eight-point-five percent." Fast forward a little bit. Historically, once a market has sustained a vacancy of less than ten percent, it is time for new construction. So, Mr. Mulvaney, in your own words, we may need the very office that we are proposing to eliminate. There are a number of buildings near our businesses and train station that should be redeveloped. They are nearing the end of their useful life and should be looked at individually based on their own merit for redevelopment that would include a complimentary multifamily use. We should take this time to develop a real strategy identifying appropriate sites. We should use New Canaan and Wilton as models. In each of these towns, multifamily stocks add, stock adds value to their town with density located in areas where it is in fact complimentary. The proposed blanket zoning overlay would allow an objectively bad idea to happen under the auspices of a well-intentioned effort to make Darianne more welcoming. It would be dragged over the finish line by the location and merit of sites that are a mile away. If a small increase in the Grand List and a slight increase in multifamily and affordable units is holding so much weight that we completely overlook the shortcomings of this proposal and completely dismiss the concept of long-term urban planning, then I would like to hear it. However, if logic and facts hold weight with this committee, let's take a responsible, measured approach to an important and long-overdue initiative to make Darianne a better place to raise our kids. And let me just remind, your responsibility is to the citizens of Darianne. It is not to the Signature Group. So I, I thank you for your time. Um, that, that's it for me. So thanks and, and good luck with your decision.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate all your comments and your well-thought-out and researched, um, work. Thank you. Um, do you have anybody next?
Might want to be next, but, uh,
Does someone want to be?
People that haven't spoken, Mr. Mian.
But it's actually Mrs. Mian. Um, I wasn't prepared to talk. I live at nineteen Bayberry Lane. And I've been here, I've been here since nineteen ninety-one. And I did not sign on for any of this, um, even as an older person. I just, I'm tired of this town saying yes to everything, not listening to the people that have to live in this area and have things change. And I'm also worried about Selic's Woods. I walk in there all the time. It's, I'm just tired of this town saying yes to everything and not really thinking about what the people want. And I love what everybody has said on Fairmead. I can't believe that building got built. And again, you say yes to something, and then they come along and they change it again. And all of a sudden, we've got, you know, a multi-level building going up. This town has certain places that it would be great for young people to be able to move into Darianne. The train stations, young people want to be where they can just walk out on the street and go to the train station or a restaurant. I'm not going to say much more because I've got all these notes from everybody, but I just disagree. And I think this company is just, you know, a smokescreen of what really is going to go on. And it's happened in this town before, you know, they give you the smokescreen and you say yes, and then it changes hands, and then it doesn't become what you said it's going to be, and things just change. And this town on Old Kings Highway North, I walk my dog. I get verbally abused almost every day when I tell people to slow down. There is way too much traffic coming through here. I cannot believe it's going to get better. Um, that's all I'm going to say. Sorry. I was not prepared. I, I don't have anything articulate to say apart from I disagree with what's going on. Thank you.
You did fine. Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Um, is there anybody else in the general public that would like to speak to this zoning change application?
Actually, this is Mano Prasmati again. Uh, I spoke earlier. I'm on thirty-four Fairmead. Uh, I was actually put on the spot, and I wasn't kind of ready for speaking. But two other points that I would like to add to my earlier, uh, conversation. Well, you know, I don't know if you guys look at, uh, you know, if it's your committee's thing to look at the number, you know, the cost that it's going to take for adding new students and things like that. I mean, you know, you're just trying to make the proposal, but, you know, from my point of view, you know, if you look at a fifty-nine apartment thing, you know, I would think there are at least a hundred kids, if not more. And if each kid costs about twenty-five thousand dollars for our school system, you're talking about two-point-five million dollars a year. And, uh, I don't think that's the kind of increased revenue we're going to get out of this, uh, apartment building complex versus the commercial building. And also, you know, like someone else had mentioned, you know, Bob Gillen, if he made an investment, if he made a mistake in his investment, it should not be the committee's job to, you know, bail him out. Basically, that's what he's saying, that, you know, we have low occupancy rates, so we want to make it multifamily housing. Uh, you know, he made a bad decision. You know, he has to live with it. I mean, it shouldn't be the committee's thing, you know, to rezone just because he can make a good decision in, you know, his location or whatever. Um, that's all I have to add. Thanks for your time.
You're mother walking. Not a problem. If anybody that spoke already wants to speak again, as per the rules, you're about to do that, as long as everyone spoke once already. Um, and, you know, we got time. We're not going anywhere, please. Um, with that said, would anybody else like to speak to this application?
I just have one question, Chairman, if I can.
Miss, uh, yes, Mrs. Conway, please go ahead.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm a little, I just had a question since you guys are dealing with this all the time. Is there a new office building being built? I was at ten-twenty Post, and I noticed that Baywater was developing a new office building. Is that true?
Yep, hundred thousand square feet. It's either a hundred thousand or eighty thousand.
But I mean, is office space, I'm a little bit confused because I know that this project wants to use this um, struggling office. Is there a decline in office? Is there a lot of vacancies or?
The vacancies are, um, and it's really not my place, but to answer your question, vacancies are in pockets. Vacancies that are, um, that are outside of the CBD are generally where they occur. If they're inside the CBD, um, usually options are higher. If you ever go to Stanford and you drive up and down, um, Long Ridge Road or High Ridge Road, which is outside the CBD, they have a huge vacancy problem out there. Um, and that's just an example to give you a wide, um, bellwether. But if you go downtown Stanford, it's a whole different, it's a whole different story. Okay. Would anybody else like to speak to this application for the zoning change that the town, is a town-wide project? Ms. Caroline Boe, wow, you're mother walking. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening. Um, I'm actually Lorena Rodriguez.
Okay.
Mine is my partner, and we live at one thirty-nine Old Kings Highway.
Welcome. We got your letter. Thank you.
Uh, yes, that was a very, uh, nice letter that Caroline put together. I kind of just second her thoughts there. Um, so that's why I'm kind of, uh, speaking tonight on behalf of the both of us. I think majority of our neighbors have already touched on the points that we would touch. Um, but certainly just want to reiterate from our side that we a hundred percent opposed to this for many reasons. We just moved from New York City about six months ago. If we had wanted to stay in that kind of environment, we would have stayed in New York City where my commute was ten minutes versus the hour and a half that it will be now or more, who knows? Um, second of all, um, I think it's quite evident and many facts have been mentioned already tonight that, um, the developer is in a bad situation. And, you know, guess what? We all have been impacted by the pandemic in one way or another. And we've all have to have had our issues and suffered and et cetera, et cetera. Unfortunately for him, it's been a monetary loss. But, you know, as the pandemic starts to calm down and the world starts to come back to some sort of normality, I'm sure business is going to pick up and he could see his vacancy go up. Um, I find it quite offensive as someone who was born and raised in Puerto Rico, who, um, was not, you know, from an affluent family and who worked very hard to get where she is and find herself being able to And find herself being able to move to Darien. A town that everyone thinks is such a great town that offers so much. I find it quite offensive that we're even having a conversation where clearly a developer is looking to monetize on creating some sort of affordable housing. Well, I want to share with all of you as again, a female born and raised in Puerto Rico. Not from a rich family, who is also in a same-sex relationship. I can speak to diversity. And if I was, if I don't, if I am not an example bringing diversity into this town, I find it quite offensive that we're looking at affordable housing. In a dead-end street facing ninety-five with trucks all night and zero amenities. This is what we're offering the people that we want to invite into our community in Darien. So again, I second Michael, Sandra, Tim. I think there's too many facts and I don't need to run over the list again. I hope that the commission and Mr. Chairman, that you really consider this decision. I think we here are representing Fairmeat and the adjacent streets. But I feel very confident in saying that this this was made out to the public. And the other areas where to participate in a hearing like this one, that the opposition would be bigger. That's it for me. Thank you everyone for your time.
Thank you for your comments and welcome to Darien as a six months new resident.
Thanks.
Would anybody else like to speak to this application? Would anyone else to speak again to the application that may already has spoken?
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, when you ask that question on behalf of the applicant, we would like to respond to some of these things. I don't know if your, your canvassing of the audience relates to the public or the app.
It's, it's, we're going to, we're going to close with you at the end, Mr. Hennessy. Not a problem. Anybody else you can think of, there's somebody in the chat, there's somebody else that sent in stuff.
I think almost everyone here has spoken, so. Okay, you have Mr. Hennessy.
Wrap up. Okay. Mr. Hennessy, it seems like everyone that wants to speak to the general public did have an opportunity to speak. And just for the record, this is a townwide proposal. So the entire town is notified via the newspaper and other public documents I have. It's not specific to one area. It's the same way we town plan as conservation and development where we studied that thing. It's all townwide. So anybody's allowed to charm in. With that said, Mr. Hennessy, if you want to add any comments before we close the hearing and move on, that would be great.
I think we'd be deeply appreciative, Mr. Chairman, if we had a little time to thought more thoughtfully respond than off the seat of our pants. There are a couple of things that have been said tonight that I think deserve a little analysis that we don't have at our fingertips. And you know, we're happy to respond verbally or in writing. We could have a brief continuance. I think we'd be appreciative of that. I think it would advance the discussion on a factual basis.
That's fine. I mean, I think the thought is that we would close the hearing tonight. But if you want to make a reason to keep it open, because you want to submit something else for the record before we decide on the townwide text amendment, that's fine.
I think we'd be appreciative of that and I think the commission would find it useful. And we would be very brief. This would not take long at all and it might be all in writing for that matter. We could work with staff on that. But just as a general observation, I'd like to point out that I think some folks have lost sight or maybe don't appreciate what's before us tonight. And what all that's before us tonight is a proposal to allow in the DO zone, a new use at the same height and scale and mass and density as proposed as allowed for office building. And that new use is multifamily housing. And it would have with it by virtue of the town regulations an element of affordability, which is something that is ingrained in the town plan and conservation and development. So this hearing tonight isn't about construction issues. It's about landscaping, it isn't about noise or fencing heights. But I fear that a lot of these issues have conflated and understandably, I guess. But I do want to assure everybody that if this application is approved and if the next application is back filed, all of those issues become germane and can be dealt with. The other thing I just want to correct for the record and we will get you much more confirmed fact is that this isn't a temporary situation with the office building. Mr. Mulvaney, you're in the business, you understand what's going on with suburban office parks. This isn't a blip, this isn't a pandemic created issue. Office buildings that are isolated and that are in that thirty-five to forty-year-old age are functionally obsolete at this point. There will be redevelopment. There's no question about it because there's, there's no market for this type of office product. So this, this will happen. This is a phenomenon. We probably in our office spend more time on this type of job than than any other job. And there's a variety of uses. And I would say in most towns, a variety of uses that find the redevelopment attractive. A lot of it's retail, a lot of it's entertainment, a lot of it's educational. I would say multifamily housing is probably one of the most sensible and least impactful for surrounding neighbors of any of the possible uses for, you know, an office park. They tend to be highway is well-located, roadway well-located. They tend to be already assembled and rather large. They tend to be rather park-like and that lends itself well to multifamily because they're nice places to live, just like the folks on Fairmeat have a nice place to live. Because it's a wonderful area, this will be a wonderful area for the residents of Parkland. So I'd just like to leave you with that thought. And we do appreciate the opportunity to respond more fulsomely to some of the other comments. And we promise to be brief and concise.
Sure, I mean, I, me personally, I have no objection to keeping it open. I don't know if any of the commissioner has an objection to keeping it open. George Ryan is saying no, Jim Rand's okay. Chen Lei, do you care if we keep it open? We might, we might have lost Chen.
No, I'm here. Sorry, I was immune. No, that's fine, we can keep it open.
Okay, cool. All right. We can keep it that way. Would anybody else, before we move on to this hearing, like to speak tonight? Just as a follow-up on anything else? Mr. Henry, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to make one comment. I mean, I don't think we've lost sight of anything. I think we understand what is at stake here. We understand that the overlay is for the entire town. But the applicant is sending this through so they can develop a specific property. And in this case, the specific property that they are intending to develop is 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 an abomination. So that, I just want to make sure, I just want to be clear that we do understand exactly how this is working.
Okay. And the way our regulations read, just so everybody's on the same page. With regards to major zoning changes and major applications, there's always a special permanent application?
There would be, if this gets approved, and who knows if it will, there'd be a subsequent application with the details about traffic and parking and lights and landscaping, which we mentioned earlier. All those details would be, have to be, we'd have more hearings just like this to discuss those types of issues relative to any proposal, whether it be this property or another property in the, that would take advantage of or use this zone, if you will.
Because the way we've drafted it is with this, it's a special permit.
Correct, it would be a site plan and special permit. So certainly, whether this property or another property, there'd be a site plan, special permit application.
Would have, how did we do garden homes? Was that special permit too?
That was a little different, that was eight thirty G application, that was a different type of application.
That's fine. Okay, with that said, anybody else is welcome to speak tonight. We're going to move on. Mr. Trump.
I just want to note something, Mr. Mulvaney. That on the the May fourth meeting, where we had a lot of people on the call, in excess. If you remember, it was one of the largest committee meetings. We allowed Mr. Hennessy to do his presentation without any response from us. However, on our night, Mr. Hennessy insisted on responding to us. So I would have loved to respond on May fourth to a lot of the items that he brought up. But I thought the protocol was he did his presentation and then tonight was to hear from the residents.
You're a hundred percent correct. What we typically do at any application is before we close the application, we allow the applicant to speak at the very end.
Okay.
So he spoke at the very end. I think everyone had a chance to speak, but you know, we're not going to close this tonight anyway. So if you want to send the E-boss out to the rest of the town and invite them to the next meeting, it's still an open application.
Okay.
Okay.
You would have to authorize the continuation, the date would be Tuesday, June first. It would be the day after Memorial Day. Bill, you would, that would be the continuation date if you don't want to close it tonight.
It's fine.
Okay. Right, someone else chimed in before we.
I appreciate your patience. I'll be as brief as possible. I just wanted to respond because it felt to me like some of the things we had said were sort of mischaracterized at the end. I know I'm speaking on behalf of my family and a few members of the community. We're not anti-development, we're not even anti, you know, denser urban, you know, housing development. We just, this, this overlay needs to be considered. And the first example of the project that's, that's the, you know, the, the first one is a terrible idea. So I think there's definitely a need to look at some of these deliverables for the town. But obviously this overlay, the first example we're looking at is telling us that there might be a better way. And so I just want to, I'm sure you guys do this all the time and you're better at it than I am. But just keep in mind there, just because this proposal, you know, is the first one that made it in front of you, doesn't mean that it's the best way to achieve the town's goals. And I want this town to be thriving. I look forward to living here for many years. So if the first example has like problems and some of which you might agree with, like realize that there's definitely other ways we can achieve the goals that we need.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, so Mr. Hennessy, you had said you wanted the hearing continued. The continuation date and time will be Tuesday, June first at seven thirty PM. We'll be getting out the login information on the town website the Thursday before the meeting.
Fantastic.
So that is noticed to everyone here tonight. That's the continuation time.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Everybody that spoke, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Chairman's report. Chairman's report, only a couple of quick items. On Thursday, myself and the other people that are, I guess, on the OPC Committee, which is the First Electman, the Chairman of the, the Chairman of the Board of Finance, the Chairman of Board of Education and the Speaker, and the Speaker of the House, yeah, the moderator of the RTM, or excuse me, invited to the League of Women Voters virtual meeting, I think it's at seven thirty PM. So I want to be speaking at that. I don't know what the batting order is, but I'll be there. The other item that came up, and I don't have confirmation of it, but I'm told that some of the state bills are coming to the floor pretty soon. There was supposedly, it might be on an agenda for a vote tomorrow, which is Wednesday or Thursday. I didn't get confirmation of that. I found out last night, I think, at about ten o'clock. And Jeremy and his team researched it and didn't really find anything. But supposedly some of those state bills in whatever draft form there are, were posted either last night or this morning. But we didn't find them. So I don't know what's going on, that's, that's the update on that. And then the only other item is Jeremy and I got invited to a meeting, or I got invited to a meeting with Jeremy with the Palmer's, with the Palmer's earlier today. They're going to be coming back to the Planning, Zoning Commission. They have a potential tenant that might need a special permit and they got to tweak the parking a little bit. So I don't know when we'd see that, but I don't think, they said July, right?
I think they're going to try for late summer.
Yeah, they have some work to do and whatnot. I don't have any confirmation of the potential tenant, I don't know how much confidentiality is, but those are the things I just want to bring up in my report. I think that's it, right?
That's it.
That's it, okay. Any other business cannot be considered because it's a special meeting. Our next meeting is May twenty-fifth. What are we doing on May twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth is a full public hearing night. It's continuation of twenty-six Peach Hill. And then three other public hearings, nineteen Holly Lane, ninety-four Five Mile Road Road, ninety-three Old Kings Highway, and we'll try to get a decision ready for ten seventy-seven Post Road. So it's a very full night next week.
Okay. Ten seventy-seven Post Road, Peach Hill, is that the one with the, the, the house building next to the other guy?
That's correct.
Okay. Then June first.
June first will be this and then three other public hearings that night on Long and Point Road, also full night.
Fantastic. All right, with that said, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn before nine o'clock. That's Jim Rand, Jim Ryse got the second. There we go. All's in favor.
Aye.
All right, thanks.
Well done.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Have a great night, all.